Yay. Option save, recording, video, audio. My pin though. Okay. Really right now.
Is the audio loud enough?
Yeah, thank you. It's ready to speak on name.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is our name speaker right here. It's on.
Where's the album?
It's right there. We're trying to retire. Tiring. Okay, there we go.
Yes, anybody?
Anybody here? Anybody want to chime in? One device connected. We'll say, there are a lot of not thinking. So, I think we're good. Probably need to order. Um. We have two items on the agenda for tonight. Before we get to the public hearing on the Menetone Woodland subdivision, we're going to take up the application from three colony road. It's not empty. Um, it's we've discussed this application several times previously. And at last meeting that I did not attend. The hearing was continued and there were two specific items that were identified that planning board was looking forward with information on. Um, first of all, um, there was a request that we get more information on the issue of your areas for footage is. And secondly, um. Additional information on the accepted system since the the material that we had in hand at the time indicated that the system had been applied for two. And what is proposed is three. So additional information on both of those items was submitted by the applicant and we've had some opportunity individually to review that. Um, but it would be helpful if you could walk us through those couple of submissions and point out highlights for us. And then we can have questions and yeah, we can provide any comments that we have. And again, this is a continuation of the public hearing from last.
Sure, thanks. Um, we did reset and do subject design and existing one evaluated. And then do new design post on this part of submission. Um, and then the diagrams we submitted. One was for the square footage and then one showed the layout of where the subject goes on the new website plan. Uh, the diagram for the square footage clarification went out there, re-measured stairs, make sure they were a little more feet. Um, all the different points that were discussed last time. Uh, so some is there on the left where what we're what we're counting. And then the overall total design change. You know, being the negative hundred and forty. That is including the shed which was was discussed and may or may not be able to put.
Yes. So if you want to generally present the information about the subject design and come and talk in a bit more detail about the square footage.
Okay, um, yeah, we had we had the subject design done for the three bedrooms as proposed. The there is going to be a pump station. Uh, building, a hundred and ninety pump station and then a leach field. You know, we should build the concrete chambers so that is more durable than the built areas. Um, the second will be located directly behind the retain wall. Uh, it's currently there and then there's a area where the shed is that is used to what was for leach field. So that's kind of what it poses there.
But why don't we start with the subject design? Anyone have questions or comments on Tom? Did you want to offer perspective on this?
All right, it's good. Um, quite nice to the leach fields, oh wait, replacement.
Yes.
Is the subject bank in the completion being used once there or is that?
No, no, the the tank straddles underneath the current retaining wall. So the tank, if we're gonna use a pump station, we might try just to save the guys money, but tank is new.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was probably with the can.
Anyone else have comments or questions about the subject design?
So, um, now you have we're looking at greatest amount to full extent. And so now, I mean, the subject where the seventh field was was always an issue and now it's still the issue, right? I mean, you couldn't move the house further back.
Right, with where, right, where the where the soil is tested for the leach field.
And what they exist in the future is too.
Right, okay.
So with respect to those square footages, um, what you submitted was very helpful. Thank you. I think it was a lot clearer in terms of what we were looking for.
True.
Um, as I look at this, um, and I think that you had talked a little bit at the last meeting about the status of the existing shed, if you will, and as I read the provisions in the in the L U O. Um, it's, you know, I have a concern about using the square footage of the shed to add to the camp in front. Um, the L U O talks about non-performing structures. And it makes it very clear that in existing, if you're replacing an existing non-performing structure, that the new structure cannot be any larger than the existing structure. And, you know, my concern with adding in something like a shed and then including that in the square footage of the new residence is that in theory, it's possible that an applicant could have, you know, lots of old well buildings, so an old garage over in the back and and demolishing those and adding it to the square footage of the non-performing cottage. I I don't think is in keeping with the, you know, the with the spirit of the ordinance, certainly, and probably not the letter of the ordinance. But when I did the numbers, um, what I did when I looked at this was to just set aside the issue of the structure and didn't calculate that in. And what I came up with was a total of fifteen ninety-nine for existing. And sixteen oh five for the new. Now, I know that's not very much, but you know, sixteen oh five was more than fifty. So, um, that's the issue I would present to the planning board and to you for for discussion. Um, it you certainly know better than I, but it it seemed that it might be a fairly simple matter to alter perhaps the deck in some in some fashion. Um, so that it didn't exceed, um, at all, being square footage of the existing structure.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely had to be able to shrink. We had one of the decks there just a little bit to to be within compliance. I think we came at, uh, I hear your standpoint, you know, I think we had come at it from a presented per base surface. That's kind of what I was thinking was was like taking this pretty surface and then add it to it, but I hear you point on you know, how that might be applied down the road.
And and the, you know, the ordinance talks very specifically about calculating a floor area.
Okay.
And given that as well, I think it's, you know, it seems pretty clear that they're talking about the living area of the structure. Um, planning board members, any comments, discussion?
I agree with you. I agree with that. I think it's a big response. I had a question.
Are anyone else on that point? Any comments or questions?
Have we never allowed for an outbuilding to be converted into an existing structure because I I only have a goal and story where I've heard that people have done that in the past.
Have.
Like in an out in an outbuilding being used for square footages and the of the structure has the planning board never allowed for that? I mean, we're talking about a foot. It's not a big deal. I'm just curious because you know, I I've only heard stories and people have spoken to me between the big guy, but I can't cite your specific case. I'm just curious.
Um, I I'm not, I'm not aware of a case. I mean, you know, it's it's pretty fact specific. And, um, there may have been some projects where there are outbuildings involved for some reason or another, but I, you know, I personally don't recall one that was exactly like this.
Okay.
Justin, I had a question about the the winner from Combsy Watership District. I think we talked about it a little bit last week. You're okay with the recommendations by Bill Monica?
Um.
Do you have, you want to see?
Yeah, I don't. That was all, he was above the stairs with the basically maintaining the fons you have in front, maybe adding some more where the stairs are.
Oh, sure. Yes, okay. Yeah, I spoke with him before we issued the letter, so.
There there were several several issues that he commented on in in the letter and another was, um, using erosion control mulch as opposed to silt fans. And there were several things in here.
Well, I require that in my building permits now.
So, so you do, you do have the
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So we just wanted to confirm that, um, the applicant was was comfortable with those suggestions that Bill wants.
Yes, definitely.
He talked about collecting runoff from the roof. Those construction regulations, a series of interlocation steps.
Yes.
Those are steps that when you were talking about the building.
Yeah, on the rear retires, brush stone, perforated pipe underneath.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that was, he was kind of excited about that comment.
Okay, um, fighting board members, anything else? Any other comments or questions?
So the the request is to reduce the square footage by like a foot or something like.
Six square feet.
Six square feet and then they get to keep the up.
Yeah.
Um.
You know.
It's not part of the calculation.
The word, but I mean, I I can talk to the owners. We we were trying to trade it off in square footage, but, um, yeah, I don't think they're, I don't think they're attached to the sheds, so.
With the outlaws, we keep it continuous.
I guess I need to be told me that a lot.
Yeah, I would say.
If we're not counting it.
Sheds and sheds.
And I think the only other reason that, you know, it might be an issue, but looking at all of this, I don't, I don't think it is. If if the shed was one of those factors that caused the building not to move back further, but I don't think that's the case, so. I'm listening. Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, the public hearing is is still open and, um, if there is any member of the public that has any question or comment, um, now would be a good time to present that. If there's anyone here or anyone on Zoom who has commented about this application. Please let us know. Eric, non. Um, I would take a motion to close the hearing.
So. Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor? Manus. And, um, we've, I believe, agreed that the applicant is amenable to reducing the size of the overall structure by six square feet. And that the, um, and also that the Combsy Watership District regulations will be will be implemented.
Yes.
And so I think we're ready for a motion on the application.
I'll make a question to approve the application as amended subject to standard conditions that you very commonly. And that's, yeah. Just. It includes, as many includes the reduction in square footage versus you then.
Right, yeah.
Construction under the subject system and finds the, no mind those comments. And also in terms of we we want to apply in this of the bridge back to the extent of in this case, I agree that the placement of a new structure meets the test of greatest practicality, given the slope of the land and and the existence of the institution, subject field. So, the retaining wall and all that.
For second.
Sorry. It's a long motion.
Um, further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Don't forget to stop by for building.
Yes, yeah.
Everyone sign in. And my call will stay on. I didn't, I didn't get back to the issue of the voting members instead of what I
Yeah.
Um, we are missing a member and so we are guessing.
Is there any procedural problem we haven't voted on the first one?
No. So the, um, the second item on our agenda tonight is, uh, the public hearing on the Menetone Woodland subdivision. Um, we prior to the meeting tonight, a number of us were at a site visit looking at the property that the subdivision is supposed to be motivated on. Um, a couple of us didn't walk all the way to the far end of the property. And so I think I would ask first of all, if any of the members who did take that entire walk, if you have anything you'd like to offer on your load. Um, anything you saw that was of particular interest, any observations you made that could best it was my benefit.
I'd make a point to make is that the lots can't menetone lots, uh, crossing the lots in this place. Our lots destination is being moved, moved lots over. So there are one structure. You realize that in those lots, they're barely deep. So it's mainly, it's it's an extra common area source.
Anybody else?
So we walked to the the intersection. A location where the fire column would be somewhat you know, on it. Um, and you have to give them with indicate that they may be changing the total of the power. Not on, on the back.
Excuse me, you're all going to have to speak up because the microphone is not catching you. So if you just make an effort to speak really loud, thank you.
Okay, uh, so just a a brief summary of where we we are. This application is subject to R M P six, section J of the land use ordinance, which pertains to major subdivisions. And we had determined that this proposal was a major subdivision. Uh, the first time it came before us for discussion and was presented by Mainland Development on behalf of Lucky Lucky Ventures. That was in April, April ninth of this year. Uh, there was information that was identified as being needed, uh, that the applicant worked and put together. Um, there was also discussion on May fourteenth. And on the sixteenth of July, uh, there were revisions from the application and additional information, supplemental information that was submitted by Mainland. At the planning board meeting on the thirteenth of August, there was discussion about that supplemental information. And a couple of additional questions did come up, um, uh, having to do with the nature and size of contiguous wetlands on the site. And also the issue of the fire column was that was discussed as well. Ultimately, um, on the thirteenth of August, the application was found complete, uh, that all of the the basic pieces were there. And it was at that meeting where the public hearing is scheduled. So, um, before opening the public hearing, I'd like to talk just a little bit about about process so that there's a common understanding of where we are in in the process and how it will unfold after this. So our principal purpose tonight, in addition to cite those that we've already accomplished, is to hold a public hearing on this application. The, um, applicant will have an opportunity to highlight some of the major points, particularly the revisions and supplemental information that has been provided. But as we all know, there were a number of uh, questions and comments that have come forward over the past few months. Uh, we've received some excellent written comments from interested parties. Uh, the planning board has discussed this issue. Uh, the applicant, um, has provided additional information. So I do want to thank everyone for that. I think it was really helpful to have some of those issues out on the table and discuss to some extent um, before we actually got into, um, seriously deliberating on the merits of the application. So to all of you who have been participating today, thank you very much for that. It's been helpful. Um, there will, um, tonight likely be a discussion around certain topics in particular. But, um, I do want to mention that I don't anticipate, uh, that we will be at a point tonight where we actually deliberate the entire application and and certainly won't be making the decision. And I say that because there are a number of complicated issues. This is a big application with a lot of information, a lot of moving parts, and that information has been coming in over the course of of several months at this point, with the most recent submissions being, um, uh, just last week, late August, mid to late August and last week. So, um, it's extremely important, I think, that we take as a board, that we take time to individually review all the information that we have. And then as a board, uh, to deliberate, um, on all of that information and issues that have been raised. And I expect that we will be receiving a number of comments from interested parties tonight. And I do want to ensure that we have sufficient time and opportunity to review all those comments and to be able to respond appropriately to all of them. So, um, it is possible that, um, the planning board will have additional questions and perhaps information requests for the applicant. The fact that the application was found complete, um, doesn't mean that the planning board will have no more questions or need for additional information. I think we'll see how that unfolds, but we certainly could be requesting, um, some additional material. Um, the other thing that I would like to remind planning board members of in particular is that because this is a major subdivision, the ordinance splits it into the process into three different pieces. Uh, there's a sketch plan review and a preliminary review and a final review. We're in the preliminary stage at this point. We we completed the sketch plan review. And what we have been reviewing is information that pertains to the preliminary application process at this point. There will be, um, the final application that is required by the land use ordinance. Most of the information, however, if you look at the the ordinance in this regard, most of the information, the technical and the substantive information comes in during this preliminary review period. And so we have the bulk of what we need to to review at this point. But there will be that final phase when we move through this. And if and when a preliminary approval is issued, it would then move into the final approval stage. So it is a three step process which makes it different from all of the other applications. Um, so before we proceed, I guess I can ask if there are any questions or comments on
Sorry.
Um, questions or comments on on process issues? I mean, I described it very generally. We've talked about it before, but if there are any questions about where we are currently, where I have it, uh, this is a good time to talk about. Um, there are any members of the public, uh, interested parties that have process questions, means they have the answers they want to see. Anyone on Zoom? Um, so with that, um, I will over the public hearing at this point. And I think first, we would like to have a brief presentation, um, by the applicant's representative. And I would, um, uh, suggest that probably the best way to approach it at this point, since everyone has had a lot of information and a fair bit of time to review and if you want to focus or highlight um, the revisions to the application and the changes that have been made as this project unfolded, that would be helpful.
Good evening. Uh, I'd like to start with my first line of mine is Bob Barry. I'm mainland development consultant. Uh, most of you saw me here, uh, last month. Uh, as a reminder, Shane Alley is like called up from the military, so Captain Alley will don't be here for the rest of this project unless the military will, um, grant him early leave or he goes AWOL. I don't think he'll go AWOL. Uh, so we will see it back soon, but I don't, I don't think it will be in time. Um, so, uh, first, I I thank planning board members that came to the sidewalk and the members of the public. We had a good walk. It's a beautiful area. Uh, I do wish to apologize. Uh, I understand there was an expectation that some work had been done down there and that there would be more parking. Uh, and that was not my understanding of that expectation. So I I carry blame for that. Uh, thank you, uh, to a neighbor, Meredith Lee, who owns this property. Uh, and generously, uh, granted us the ability to partner her in her, during her. Uh, and generously, uh, granted us the ability to park in her, in her, during her construction time there. So, um, so we appreciate that. Uh, at the sidewalk, we met here and then walked down to here. That's really all that we saw. We came back. It was a a relatively short walk. Uh, we saw deer, we, uh, we, we checked out, uh, where the street crossing is. Um, uh, but productive nonetheless, I believe. Uh, and as a summary. Lane Road comes down here, north, uh, uh, Lane Road and then North Wayne Road that way. Manitama Cam Road comes here. The applicant is proposing to upgrade. The North Wayne Road in this direction to this intersection and then build a new road. The Ju- uh, called Jupiter Lane up to a Hammerhead here. Uh, we're proposing eight new lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There is a lot nine over here. Well, I'm sure that will come up. Because lot nine has already been sold. We're calling it lot nine. It was not not lot nine when it was sold. It was just a lot division. It was part of the parent parcel, uh, and it was sold last year. Um, which is perfectly legal, uh, and and normal. However, then the applicant decided to do this eight lot subdivision. And by main law, anything that happens, any lot division that happens within five years is part of the subdivision. So lot nine is part of the subdivision by main law. It's not reviewable. It's not ours. We can't go there and do any work. The what the work you see on lot nine is done before it was sold. Uh, it's but it's there and it's part of the subdivision. That's not why it's not. That's why it's not colored. Because it's it's not a lot we control. It's it's controlled by the new owner, uh, and in fact, they're getting ready to build, uh, their own house over here. So really, this subdivision or these eight lots in this area. The project has changed. Then, Madam Chairman, you you did a really good job, by the way, uh, describing the process, uh, and where we are today. Thank you for that. Uh, I I had just looked all that up today. I was like, where are we? This is where we are. And then I was, I should have just looked at it, like, perfect, um. And, uh, so it there was, uh, multiple versions of this. Uh, there was a discussion of bringing this road down further. It was cut back to this intersection. There was a discussion about stormwater and, uh, it was going to be channeled across. Uh, to a lot that the applicant owns over here and then to spread out as a level spreader, which is a DEP group investment practice. Device for handling stormwater control, uh, but then talking to the fire chief, we decided, uh, within conjunction with discussion with the fire chief. That we do a fire pond here, which can double as a stormwater pond as well. So stormwater is now being collected into this pond. I'm bringing it up because it's been changed, which is what you asked for. But also because I think it's been a point of discussion, uh, with with, uh, over and over. Uh, I'm gonna flip this over just briefly and show you a little bit of a detail on that stormwater since that was. Point of discussion. Pardon me, did I fumble my way through this? You go. This is a a little partial plan. Bologna, bigger scale. This is the end of the North Wayne Road that's being proposed to be upgraded. And then this is the very beginning of Jupiter Road that goes up, and this is lot two. And the stormwater show is a, um, the, uh, pond, this is your fire pond with a dry hydrant coming off of it. So the fire department can pull up and draw, uh, ten thousand gallons of water out of the pond. Um, and then when the pond fills up, it would then flow over into a level spreader and then spread out. Uh. One of the voters had concerns about that. They said, oh, uh, uh, that's not a great way to do that. We want to be able to access that, cancel, can access that to public. It's it's a talented way, so that we want the public to be able to access that. We agreed. I said, hey, let's let's change that. If you don't have this in front of you now, because we're in preliminary. Process, the intention is that something needs to come out in a final application. Though some of them come out before prime, uh, preliminary approval. It's up it's up to you guys to allow them coming. But when we do, when we, uh, update the plans, we bring that over to the level spreader over here. Where. The book channel, there's a little, I don't have these plans for you today, so I'm just trying to, and I'm anticipating some changes that are coming because that's what you asked me to.
Long sound plan.
Hmm?
Long sound plan.
That's lot two. The applicant owns this land.
So the levels forever would be on lot two?
Yes. Yeah.
In addition to the party.
Yes. Yeah. These will all be shown to you on plans as we continue this process of figuring out the best way to do this. Um, so that's coming, just to let you know ahead of time. I'll open it to the elevator. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about. The DEP permit. There was a discussion about wells, and I wanted to address both of those. Uh, the DEP needs two permits. Both of them are permit by rules. Which means you apply for the permit, and if you haven't heard anything back in fourteen days, you have the permit. You can get a little sheet that says you get approval. They they send it to you at their timeframe, their DEP under staff right now. Uh, we need two. We need one for this stream crossing, and for those who walked down there, we actually saw that. That stream, it's a DEP intermittent stream at that location. And then we needed one for the project as a whole. We have both of those from DEP, uh, and the. The permit by rules for the overall project, uh, they actually sent us the approval page. So we included that in your latest submission.
What was the what was the letter from DEP saying? We never have the way to enter information.
So what happened was, uh. Ninety-nine out of a hundred times, we submit a permit by rule, we never hear anything back. We never hear, uh, any questions. We never hear any, um, any concerns. We never hear anything. And two weeks later, we have a permit, uh, it's a permit by rule. We don't, we don't have, we don't get a page or a paper. But in this case, they called with a couple of questions. We answered those questions. They were like, okay, and they signed, they signed it, and it's in there. It's in the last package that we got.
I didn't, I didn't see it. Did you see it just? I don't remember you, but I I looked, I looked again to see what we had in terms of the E P P R. You're talking about stormwater, right?
Stormwater for a vendor.
Um, and the only thing I saw was what Jack mentioned, and it was an email from the DEP staff person saying that it hadn't been accepted. Because they needed information.
We were version September five, you know, the Mark Benke.
Um, no, Mark, Mark Benke, um, is is an interested party, who's named on it. And he has a number of questions about the stormwater PBR, but, um.
And.
What's that?
Um, Neil.
Yeah.
You guys, did you get any letter from August twenty-third? That, uh, you may not have gotten that yet, but there was a three-page letter on August twenty-third. And then included on the second page. The D D second, so the some five little stormwater.
Let me take that copy.
I I don't understand.
We'll get it to you. The the fall is probably mine, I mean. I'll make your eye, so, um. Well, we will get you that, but the TP did accept, uh, we have that.
Um.
Uh. May maybe I should wait for Chip to come back on, um.
No, that's okay. Um, um, mind if you continue. I, you know, I would, I would mention that, uh, there has been a lot of. Of comment, uh, made about the assumptions. The acreage assumptions that were made in the permit by rule application. And, um, I think that's still, you know. Kind of a, it's a complicated issue because, I mean, the planning board obviously does not issue the PBR. That's a DEP issue. Um, but I think that, you know, the concern about how that calculation was done is a legitimate concern. Um, but again, I think it's a, you know, it's a it's a DEP decision, a planning board decision.
I'm happy to address that right now. We love.
Um. Um. If you could, it might be helpful to hear your perspective on it for others to hear your perspective.
I'll be brief. I'll be brief, I promise. And I also need to applaud this to Webber Street Seastorm. I am, I am leaving, uh, North Wayne Road, but all over the place. Um. Okay, DDP had multiple non-point source permitting, land use permitting, uh, thresholds. Uh, all under the chapter five hundred and chapter three eighty rules and all all these rules. Um, and, uh, those rules concern land impact. So when we say a stormwater permit by rule, we're dealing with land impacts on a piece of property. And it may be non-revegetated, it may be revegetated, maybe just tree clearing, and then maybe earthwork or buildings or driveways. But they do, um, they do, uh, uh, have authority to govern those. We all understand this. Uh, I am not referring to Natural Resource Protection Act and RPA permit by rules. This site also had an NRPA application for that string crossing.
Yeah.
I am not referring to that. When I say permit by rules for this discussion, I'm talking about the stormwater permit by rule for the overall project. Main DDP does not regulate land impacts on projects with, uh. Fourteen or fewer lots on thirty or less acres. So they do not regulate land impact from the homes on these lots.
Well, that's the site location threshold that you're talking about.
It is. Yes. And so if it's, if it's fourteen or fewer lots, main DDP does not regulate. They regulate the road. And common infrastructure. They do not regulate the houses themselves. This is fifty-year-old rules for for DDP that I've worked with in my whole career. Anyone definitely welcome to call DDP and ask, uh, but that is the way that works.
So, I mean. What, what, what that. What that means is that they don't regulate through the site location law. Or a subdivision of this size, and I think we all understand that. Um, but. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't. Review it for a stormwater PBR and apply those standards from the stormwater PBR to this project.
I'm sorry to contradict you. I I am not trying to be offensive in any way. I'm just trying to help shed some clarity on.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue. I'm just trying to understand.
If this, if this lesson's slow to, main DDP does not regulate homes. They just don't. Uh, they don't regulate residences that do not trigger slow to applications. Uh, they will if it's an NRPA. So when somebody builds a home that impacts a stream or wetland or rural pool, they're all about that. But the land use itself, main DDP cannot regulate residences, including a stormwater management law. Or a stormwater management law permit by rule if there's fewer than fifteen lots.
So if that's the case, then why would it issue a stormwater PBR for this particular project?
Because of this road and this river. They do regulate roads. They do not regulate homes. Residences.
Do you have a problem about that?
Well, not a lot, but.
How about that?
What hasn't been developed? I, project in some. The owner of the building is a company's boss. It's like, you know, he's a, uh, he's like, that, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, can you, can you cite those comments that you mentioned? Like, I I'm looking for them in the records. I'm not sure if you talked about, you said there were comments that were made about PBR, I don't mean. I have specific concerns, Mark.
Yeah, so, uh, the specific concerns, you can find those in. Um. Uh, Mr. Benke had sent comments.
Yeah.
Uh. On the nineteenth of August. On. His letter is dated to nineteenth of August and it was sent to Chip. That was the most recent.
I'm good.
And there is a section.
Maybe this letter also.
Yeah, yeah, there was, uh, it was more than one letter that addressed this, but.
Was it, is he out there? Where are these comments? Have you had enough?
Yes.
Um. Actually, the most recent, uh, the most recent from from Mr. Benke was actually on the fifth of September, and he had sent. Um. Numbers that he had calculated. That related to a stormwater PBR. And there was a single, um. A single handwritten sheet attached to and emailed from the bank. And then there were several sets of comments, um, August nineteenth. Um. August. Thirteen. It was an email on August thirteen. Um. The first set of comments that mentioned stormwater was on the twenty-sixth of April, and that was a letter to Chip as well. And, um, uh, Mr. Benke is here, you know, I'm sure. He will share the comments.
Okay.
Portion of this.
Why wouldn't that really?
Well, it, 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 um. In in light of the explanation. Um, all of those numbers probably don't have, but I don't, there may be some other issues.
I mean, here. The difference between DDP and the applicant or maybe somebody complaining about. So the applicant representative didn't do it. But it wouldn't be. Many is one.
No, it wouldn't. It wouldn't give our decision to make, I'm so, no.
So Mr. Benke's comments should be directed to DDP.
Um, yeah, yeah, I don't know what comments he will have to make, you know, so.
Madam Chairman, um. I I'll answer any of the questions we have, uh, but you did ask me to talk about the submission, and there was one other item.
Yes, please.
Um, Chip and I talked, uh, and we were talking about the, you know, wetland, the contiguous wetland areas. Uh, he asked for a little bit more information. This was between the last planning board and this planning board. Uh, I, you know, a PDF, and he asked me to bring paper copies to the to the meeting tonight. So with your permission, I'll just hand these out. You got it, okay? I was gonna put it on the board, but it's so small that it wouldn't be good, but you. It it's, there's nothing new really, uh, here, um. These are maps that have the map already, uh, just with an extra, uh, wetland label. Um. First, uh, I'd like to call out what a wetland is. Uh, because everybody has their own definitions, uh, what a wetland is, and some people think about swamps and. And ducks and alligators, and some people think about, uh, mud huddles and frog ponds and, uh. So, uh, I am not going to talk about what the DEP thinks about wetlands, uh, now, or the article of engineering thinks about wetlands, or anybody thinks about wetlands. Other than what your ordinance says. Your ordinance calls out two kinds of wetlands. They call out a wetland, AKA a freshwater wetland. Um, and they call out, the ordinance calls out a forested wet. Uh, there are no wetland or freshwater wetlands on this property. They don't exist on the property. We have the whole thing, uh, with, uh, certified people from our company. What you're seeing on this map for wetlands are entirely forested wetlands. Uh, and then as you can see, there's actually two spots of it. Uh, there's a spot that's share among one and four. That is zero point three one acres of wetlands, and then there's the larger one that wraps all the way around from lot nine. All the way up around the top and then all the way down and connects down behind the lot, the backside of lots two, three, and six. Uh, and that is a much larger wetland, uh, sixteen point nine nine acre. Forested, right. And I think that brings us up to the day. Chip, did I miss anything?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And you. And I want to know that.
Just a moment, I forgot. I will forget if I remember.
You have any more questions for me, or should I go before you before the public hearing?
Um, is there anything else in particular that you think is important to highlight as part of this? Um, is there anything else in particular that you think is important to highlight as part of this conversation?
Not at this time, though I'm interested in, I have seen uh, Mr. Benke's comments. I think I've seen the most recent set, uh, and um, and and we'd be interested to hear what everyone has to say.
Uh, planning board questions at this point? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much.
I'm gonna leave this up for for any public, if they want one of your appointments.
So at this point, um, I would invite interested parties members of the public, if you would like to make comment on the application. And, uh, did you take a a list?
Very interesting.
Okay, uh, we have uh, two interested parties that indicated they wanted to speak, and there may be others, but I'll take these two for. Uh, the first is, um, uh, Camp Hill. I have to defer to Mark, that's okay, Mr. Benke, because he's kind of the lead person for us.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Mark Benke in one sixty eight Manitoba Camp Road. And I am representing not only myself, but the Manitoba Homeowners Association and association members that come out here. Uh, throughout the course of the application, as you guys heard, I've submitted comments and everything to the planning board. Purpose of that is to help you guys with the arduous task of reviewing the submitted documentation, which is a lot. And also to preserve the sanctity of the process, and as well as hold developers accountable to comply with ordinances and regulations. So the proposed subdivision is located only three tenths of a mile upslope from the shores of Lovejoy Pond. While only eighteen hundred feet away, all drainage that comes off this property will eventually build into Lovejoy Pond. Mr. Lawrence, a member of Lovejoy Ventures LLC, owns three lots within our subdivision that also abuts this proposed subdivision. Our association started forty-four years ago, nineteen eighty, when Mr. Lawrence's dad sold off cabins and property to former of the former Camp Menatoma individuals like my family. Tonight becomes stewards of the land and advocates to preserve the beauty and lessen the impact on Lovejoy Pond. I have five areas of concerns. At the time, when I wrote this, it was twenty-two topics, but that's changed now with some of the revisions that have come through. Uh, the first area of concern is stormwater. Uh, I'll start with topic one. I draw the calculations. Uh, and within the submittal, the engineer has a table of flows and some narrative description, but results can't be verified as no calculations were provided. Main stormwater regulations say calculations can be made available for review for components. Manitoba Association requests the planning board to require the engineer to make available their calculations for review and provide ample time for review to verify ordinances are met prior to subdivision approval. Now, topic two is the permit by rule, which I am totally and thoroughly confused on. So I will have to just skip that whole thing and uh, get a little more information on that one. Uh, topic three was was uh, addressed because I wanted all stormwater BMPs need to be within the subdivision and treated prior to relieving the subdivision. So the level spreaders now moved into the uh, subdivision, so that's good. Uh, there is still an issue, though, with just unregulated release. Once the fire pond and once the level spreader fill up, they overflow, and that's an unregulated release. Uh, I do not know because there's no calculations to know if it is within flow rates or without flow rates, so it's it's kind of hard to say there. Uh, direct discharge into a stream or a budding properties is not allowed without treatment. Uh, this is in reference to the culvert that we're gonna place over the intermittent stream uh, that is and isn't there at times. Uh, just wanna make sure that uh, the ordinances are followed, the stormwater regs are followed, so that there's no untreated going into that when it is a stream and then increasing flow onto the joining property, which is Mr. Knight's property. Uh, topic five is erosion sediment control measures not shown. The silk fence that is shown on their plans that were submitted uh, doesn't encapsulate all of the disturbed areas, so they need to revise to make sure that there's enough silk fence to capture all that sediment and spilt that would potentially leave the site. Uh, the plan has a detailed sheet for construction entrance and rock check dams. Uh, I did not see that on the plans where they would be placed, so I I would just like to see in a more detailed erosion and sediment control plan with the location of rock check dams as well as calculations verifying that the thickness of the riprap line ditches and the aprons at the culverts are um, adequate. Topic six, the homeowners association bylaws. Uh, the homeowners association bylaws doesn't have any mention of maintaining any strong stormwater features. It mentions rain gardens, but we removed those, or they were removed in uh, the prior submittals. So we're kind of requesting that be manifested homeowners association bylaws be admitted and reviewed prior to subdivision approval. The second area of concern is the road. Uh, topic seven is the road construction. Uh, based on a previous submittal, the contractor that proposed an estimate DS excavating and trucking proposed putting three inches of circle gra- surface gravel, not four inches, that's required. Uh, and he also stipulated that the subbase aggregate was gonna be a rather large size, and then just put the three inches of surface gravel on top without a stone choking layer that would prevent the smaller finer surface aggregate from building into the ways of the bigger aggregate, so therefore your four inches would actually over time get pushed in and will have four inches of surface, and we're afraid that that would be put an owner's burden on the homeowners association on the road, where they'd have to re-gravel their entire roads. And then they have a contractor also dated mentioned building the road to design profiles and elevations. There are some pretty uh, specific elevations that have been designed, and that need to be followed for uh, the proper flow of the stormwater bill. And uh, as a result, we will deem that the uh, construction of the road costs is underestimated. Uh, topic eight's name of the road, we talked about this on the site visit. Uh, throughout the submittal, it's been identified as Manitoba Woodlands or North Wayne Road. Uh, our association suggests using Manitoba Woodlands to avoid confusion and potential undue increase of traffic. For those looking for a short section of North Wayne Road, we don't want them to come onto our property and go on a little short section of North Wayne Road only to find that there's supposed to be the other correction. So, um, the proposed alignment and tying into the Manitoba Camp Road. Uh, Manitoba Association would request that the tying design be changed to a T intersection prior to subdivision approval. So for those who are out there, you noticed it went on a curve, it came off a curve, and so you kind of had like more of a Y going in there. Uh, a T intersection would be a lot more safer for traffic flow and it would be a better traffic flow. And also, when you have a tie tying to a curve like that, the people going into that subdivision have a tendency to cut a corner and not really make the full right turn, and over time it's gonna get worn out, and then it'll hit the culvert, and then the ditches will get all messed up. Also, the current time location, I believe may be outside of the fifty foot abandoned right of way corridor and on the association's property. I don't know for sure, but it looks like it might be. Topic ten, the current initial four hundred foot section of Manitoba Camp Road. Our association's been maintaining that section for the past forty-three years because we've been the primary user, although it is allowed for access for public use. It is a seasonal road. It does not conform to private road standards. Only three residences use it year round, and it barely survives mud season. Adding eight lots to use that road during the winter quadruples the winter monthly usage. Now, the developer has proposed to upgrade the driveway of tax map eighteen oh five, that's Meredith Lee's driveway and that corridor section there to private road standards. We also suggest that you should bring the first four hundred feet up to private road standards. Should also be stipulated damages caused by construction equipment or construction traffic will be repaired and paid for by the developer. Our association finds this to be a critical component of the project and requests the planning board stipulate that the developer must bring all sections of existing gravel roads planned to be used to assess the development to current private road standards prior to subdivision approval. Topic eleven is formation of a roadowners association with all butters in the corridor. This was somewhat discussed uh, on the site visit. We would like to see that happen to include not only Manitoba Woodlands, homeowners association, and our association, but also the individual butters. Eric Howard, Meredith Lee, John Lawrence, Charlie Light, Marcus Keon, and Andy Brightfield, because they all have they're all within that corridor. So again, our association finds this to be a critical component of the overall project and requests that the planning board does not approve this subdivision until finalization of a roadowners association is complete. Uh, the homeowners association bylaws regarding road maintenance, topic twelve state the developer is the sole member of the association until X lots have been sold or two years has elapsed and failed the first lot. That was in our previous submittal. After that, the uh, homeowners reverse to each owner of each lot. And the question here that we have is, does the developer become the owner of each lot and responsible for paying dues until that lot is sold? We kind of request that uh, issue and deliver new bylaws to the planning board for review. Topic thirteen is a performance bond. As insurance and insurance of this project will be constructed, explaining Manitoba Association requests the planning board to require a four thousand dollar performance bond to be held by the town, or if you can get an engineer's estimate that would more accurately reflect what the real cost would be to construct this, you could go with that. To make, for the town to uh, hold and remain active until the CEO says it was built according to plan. Our third area of concern are wells. Topic fourteen, missing unidentified unaccounted for wells. We're gonna pass out the map here. So the well map that was submitted uh, by mainland, which I just submitted out, only shows they there's there are wells that they identified on yellow. They only show three wells within a Manitoba subdivision. We currently have eleven wells within the subdivision. Including our community well that's located in blue right there that services twenty-two residences. The red dots are all the wells that we kind of figured are around, but were not identified in the map. And there's actually more wells off the map to the south, which is down here along uh, North Wayne Road, but the picture doesn't go that far down, so they're not on there. Uh, a hydrogeologist or well drillers should provide a written statement of adequacy. I'm not sure if the geologist who submitted the adequacy letter was a hydrogeologist or not. Would be able to do that, because I don't know how the PE stands for here, but it just said geologist, so. Um. We would like to see that more effort from the developer to locate and identify all the wells and flow rate information and reevaluate the statement of adequacy, taking these unaccounted wells into consideration prior to subdivision approval. Uh, topic fifteen, groundwater estimates were not provided. We'd like, the assoc- the association would like the developer to submit estimates of groundwater to be used prior to subdivision approval. Toppers, topic sixteen is adverse effect. So what if the statement of adequacy is wrong after construction and there isn't enough water? We believe putting nine little wells in a concentrated area will have a localized effect on existing water supply. Manitoba Association would like to be assured by an independent hydrogeologist who has evaluated all the surrounding wells within the half mile radius taking into consideration estimates of groundwater to be used by the proposed involvement and the underlying aquifer, and that these new wells will not adversely affect our water supply prior to subdivision approval. Fourth area of concerns environment. Topic seventeen, the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Review Letter recommends a hundred foot buffer from building setbacks off a stream. The town's current ordinance is seventy-five feet, and the developer meets this criteria. The Manitoba Association requests the planning board consider adopting the department's hundred foot offset suggestion as a condition of subdivision approval. Topic eighteen, the Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Review Letter recommends a rare exemplary botanical survey as the site is currently not mapped for such. The Manitoba Association believes it's in the planning board's best interest to have the developer perform a field survey to ensure there aren't any rare and/or exemplary botanical features on site and request such study be deducted prior to subdivision approval. Topic nineteen, almost done here. The spring salamander study was conducted in January twenty twenty four. Spring salamanders can be observed in Maine from April to December, and sampling window is June to September. January is outside of that sampling window. The Manitoba Association believes it's in everyone's best interest for the planning board to require the survey be conducted again within the approved sampling window prior to subdivision approval. Fifth area of concern, maps and easements. Uh, topic number twenty, no dimension scale map to compare Article seven, section C for compliance was submitted, and that is uh, map. And that might have been done since since I looked at this. Topic twenty-one, uh, we kind of discussed this a little bit. Who will be the owner of Juniper Lane by a play? Will be the homeowners association, or will the lot owners own to the middle of the road? And I don't think the town's gonna take this road into its service. Now, last but not least, on top of twenty-two, no easements shown for maintenance is stipulated in the deed covenants and H R A bylaws. Our association believes the planning board should require the maintenance he identified on the plaque and scale map, as well as identified and addressed within those deed covenants and H R A bylaws. And that concludes our concerns. Thank you for taking them into consideration. Any questions?
I had I had one little question.
Sure.
Were you talking about the salamander, the saccharoburral pools?
No, that was just a a salamander study was done, conducted. And the letter, and it said it was done in January, and the window was supposed to be uh, June through September.
Great.
No, I I believe there are no vernaculars on the site. As identified or not identified by the wetland specialist. If I'm correct in saying that. Right?
You're asking me?
Yeah, I see. No, no wetland, no vernacular.
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Your uh, well data map.
Yeah.
Um. The red, the red dots, unidentified wells.
Yeah.
Those red dots were placed.
I mean.
And and that was because there was
A house there.
A house there, but no well had been recorded.
Correct.
Well, where would you propose to place a T intersection?
So, right now, the way the map is reading, it's the road curves, and it goes there, so it's not a T intersection, it's coming off the curve. It's just making it go straight through and straight up. So that's where the T intersection is.
We the current access or egress points. I mean, it appeared, maybe I'm wrong, but it appeared the visibility is rather good. Uh, why do you think it's lacking? Why do you need a different?
Well, but one of the reasons is cutting the corner. People, when they're coming in, I don't know if you noticed how that's getting wallowed out there. Because people aren't coming down and turning right into that. They're kind of short circuiting in anyways, and there's a culvert there and there's a ditch there. And as as over time, people consider keep straightening out. It'll eventually come straight except for the power pole that's in the middle, because they'll hit the power pole. But eventually, it's it's gonna become almost a through there anyways. If you're doing that with people coming over curves, I'm I'm just thinking traffic flow wise would be better.
That was a lengthy list of items, and I'm not sure what the planning board has the authority to rely on, what we have. I can't commit that to memory. I'd like to read that at some point in time. Can we hand that off to somebody and have them go back and research the land use ordinance and see where we have the authorities rule, where we do not, and give us some recommendations on what we see there?
Well, I mean, that really is the, I mean, that's the props of the planning boards review, is is to, you know, is to go through the comments. I mean, much, much of this has to do with standards that the planning board has to go stick. Much, much of this has to do with standards that the planning board has to go station.
Are we certain every one of those items, right? Do we have jurisdiction on this? Because I can't. Comment on any of these things without going back and referencing the land use or anything like that.
Actually, most of what I said tonight, I've already submitted before. And that references the ordinances with them.
You know, I've been using the land use words, like, or generally you were talking about the. First rock, the lower bed. And the ordinance does require four inches, she said it was three inches.
By the contractor's estimate, the design detail shows four. Yeah, so I mean, the design detail is right. It's just that's going to become a matter of construction, whether it gets constructed correctly.
So that would be up to the work issue, seeing other chat.
Right, I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention then. There's a discrepancy.
But the design is.
The cross-section design is per the town road standards, yes.
And and so the discrepancy is with what?
The surface layer. Of the contractor who submitted an estimate to which he was supposed to submit an estimate per ordinance.
Okay.
It was based on three inches of surface material, not four inches.
Okay.
And that the subgrade below the surface layer. Size wise is is pretty voidy and the surface material will eventually wear down and fill those voids and then you won't have four inches after a couple of years.
Do you have a? Do you have a new submission with comments that you're going to provide to the planning board? Or we should rely on what you had submitted previous?
I mean, I can, I can give you a copy of what I just read, I'll start what I didn't do.
Yeah, that's, I think, you know, I recognize many of your comments because you, you've written them before, so they can find additional details. In some of that was past submissions, but if you could do that, I would earn it and helpful.
Be that.
And and Nana, I, you know, I think that. As he was going down through this list. I didn't hear anything that caused me to think that, oh, this is an issue, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction. I think it is, it's. It's more a matter of. Looking at the standard in the ordinance and. Ensuring that what's been presented by the applicant complies with the ordinance. But I I don't think there's much of anything here that, you know, that that I would say that we just simply didn't have jurisdiction. You know, something like the. Homeowners Association bylaws in the subdivision standards. We certainly do have jurisdiction that we can, we can require, we can require certain things go into those bylaws. Road construction, there certainly are standards in the in the ordinance, traffic. Stormwater. So I I don't know about anyone else, but I I didn't hear anything that caused me to say, no, we can't believe that.
It brought up the PPR initially and then after some discussion, we we figured out that we didn't have the jurisdiction to rule on that.
Well, we've never had jurisdiction to rule on that.
Okay, but I'm just wondering if there's anything else. I mean, I. I'm new to this thing, so there's a lot that I don't know. I mean, plenty of keys. Bringing up some of these issues, I would feel more. Comfortable as we research, seeing a lot of written responses to that, so that we are not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I I think that's probably in terms of process. Now, that's where this leaves us. You know, we need the time to look at all of these issues. You know, to figure out what the standards are that apply to them in the ordinance. And determine, I mean, that is the, that's the props of the planning was reviewed.
Would they, I mean, would it help the process of? The applicant responding to. These items, you know, agreeing to them or not agreeing to why, not agreeing. As an alternative, sleeping in narrow.
Yeah, I think I think it would, you know. You know, if there's something that the. That the applicant heard, it was Mr. Vankis' list that. It is, you know, doable and appropriate and they agree to do it, it would be helpful to know about that upfront and. So I think that would be useful.
Happy to do that when you're ready.
Okay.
I had a question about the private pond overflow. I thought that the overflow was being directed to the block two.
Well, that's changing for Arizona. So now I think everything's going to be within the subdivision limits. So that takes care of a lot of my comments of having the. Level spreader in the public right of way. I think that is. Right, the fire pond overflow. Just releases once it's filled, it releases out and without knowing calculations, I don't know if that release rate is less than the predevelopment. Flow rate, which is a requirement in the ordinance. Or not. So I mean, I I just don't know. I'm assuming it's not, and I hope it's not. It should be designed so not to be. But there does come a time when that pond gets full. Whatever comes in goes right out. And the question is, is that?
Meaning it's not maintained?
No, if the pond is full of water and water comes into it from the streets and the roads and it's at full pond level. Whatever comes in is just going to be pushed right back out without any. Controls or regulations. And then it just depends upon what storm event it is, whether it needs predevelopment flows or postdevelopment flows.
Fire ponds get trashed out periodically because of sediment.
I'm I'm not talking about sediment, I'm talking about flows leaving the site. So the the fire pond stays. With water in now the freeboard, the amount of space between the. Emergency spillway and the actual top of the water, the pond will fluctuate based on the season evaporation, whatever. But should a storm event come and fill the pond? And then the pond doesn't go down, doesn't evaporate, stays full. And another storm event comes in after it, all that water going back on, the only spot it can go is out to overflow. So now it's leaving the site. At what rate and is it controlled or uncontrolled and it's supposed to leave the site. Less than predevelopment. Conditions, not postdevelopment. And when you. Okay, a little stormwater one on one. You've got flows. And you've got velocities. You have time of concentration, we have ground cover, all of that comes into effect with these rates. So let's go, for example. You've got an area that's sloped to the corner. One rain event comes down and rains and water runs off to the corner. You've got a gallon container. You sit it there and in one minute that gallon fills up and it takes all of the runoff in that one gallon. That flow rate is one gallon per minute. And you can convert that to cubic feet per second. Okay, now you develop that land. You put houses on, you put driveways, you put grass lawns, you take it from the forest, which is what it was beginning with, like our site here. You do all that stuff and then the same rain event comes down. The water flowing off that. Surface, the same surface, same amount of water that rained down on it, more water, the volume of water will increase. Because it's not being absorbed as it was when it was a forest. So you have more water volume coming off. Now, the time it takes to get there might be quicker, might be slower depending upon what changes were done. But now you're collecting two gallons in that one minute instead of one gallon per minute. By the ordinance, it can only leave the site at one gallon per minute, so you need to increase the time it takes. To disperse the two gallons by another minute to get to your one gallon per minute rate. So you have an increased duration of release, which goes into the streams or down slope. And so those. People that were experiencing a one minute. One gallon per minute flow rate. For like a minute. Now it's going to get that one gallon per minute, but for two minutes. So they're getting more. Exposure time for that water to run across the lane. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I mean, that also relates to. Obviously, the size of the pond as well.
Correct. So when you, when you've got the pond, the pond fills up with water, now you've got more water flowing over, but there's no storage.
Yeah, yeah, I understand all that, but you're not, you're not suggesting necessarily that the pond be made larger.
No, I'm just suggesting that we make sure that the flow rate coming out of that pond. Meets the predevelopment flow rates per your ordinance. Which I wouldn't know because I don't have the calculations to see it. I'm assuming that mainland did it, they're designed properly and the flows coming out are are as such, but. Double check. There's a lot of discussion in the application now, so a lot of the calculations, so I just think.
And you've heard from mother that they are going to come. Do this kind of finance immediately, there's going to be a change on someone. Mainland is very experienced in so much.
Other questions on planning board numbers? I'm in view of, you know, Jack's suggestion about getting responses from the applicant to narrow down. The number of issues that in a way we can look at them. I'm thinking that, you know, perhaps what we could do is is ask the applicant. To. Address it verbally to some extent, which you could do tonight.
I've got things to talk to you, so either write off the sound or nothing.
But there is a lot of detail here and the planning board needs to, you know, consider these issues as well. And so I think that probably the best way to do that and to get it into the record is also to request a written submission from the applicant. So I just put that out there as a suggestion, the planning board numbers to.
We not have the respondent that will answer it until it hits the next.
Yeah, I mean, I just talked to them, maybe that'd be more appropriate.
Yeah, I'd like to see if there's any other public comment.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Given the length of the book, I appreciate the comments, so. I think it would be fair, a lot of the applicant. Responding writing that's stacked a key earlier, sort of, you know, a lot of the studies that you didn't have. Right. Might just be a matter of explaining.
Okay, others? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Are there others who'd like to provide comments? Okay, back one. Yes, there's a few, thanks.
May want to invite the public to raise a hand if they're interested.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the committee, I feel a little bit, we have it right now after pretty much comments, but I think it's also important that you hear from laypeople as well. My name is Pam Hill. My husband and I are lifelong residents with Manny. Our residence is Woolwich. We live on the Fifth Point Road and we have a two horse farm. We've been at Manitoba for twenty-nine years. Our kids and grandkids love it at Manitoba. Our grandkids love to swim there. And I think you know, if you went to the, some of the visits when we were reconstructing our craft building, you know what a special place it is. Just to orient you a little bit about. Manitoba, so. We're, we're eleven families and we're kind of known as the Hills. And I think affectionately, I'm pretty sure affectionately. But we're known as the Hills. We're not part of the original cabins that were down below near the water front. Our cabins came later up on what we call the hill. We own our own wells and our own subject systems and have our own land, our own lots. So it's a little bit different than down below at Camden. I have three things that I'm concerned about with this development. And Mark hit on all of them and I'm just going to do it really quickly. On the subdivision plan, it showed three wells and there are eleven wells in the plan, and I think that was. An omission, a pretty serious omission that, and one of those wells provides water for twenty-two people, which are down below. We're required, Manitoba Association is required by state law to test the wells of the big well, the twenty-two. That serves the twenty-two periodically, weekly and monthly, I believe in this. And I'm concerned, as was mentioned earlier, that perhaps if we, when we have eight new houses. And and obviously eight new wells and everything, I'm worried about quantity and the quality of what, what happens then if our water well that. Beats twenty-two people, twenty-two families, what happens if that no longer tests? What is our recourse for that? The other thing that I'm concerned about is runoff. We've talked about that, eight new foam homes, probably pretty nice homes, I would imagine. With lawns and landscape and which means more phosphorus, more nitrogen, bringing in Lovejoy Pond. And I, and I don't know as much as the. The experts here about drainage, but it just seems to me eventually that water's going to go someplace and it's going to end up in our pond. I think I understand a little bit about level spreaders, but just a real little bit about level spreaders. We've talked about that. I guess the attempt to, the reason we're putting in level spreaders is to mitigate some of the runoff. But what happens when the spreaders do overflow? We're still going to have level spreaders there. And what happens with the lack of maintenance, if there's lack of maintenance? This, I think they're going to have to be maintained dug out periodically. And what happens when we have more superstorms? We've been having these superstorms all of you that from refills, everyone knows that. And we know that from Norwich. A lot of lakes and ponds in the area are experiencing algae growth some for the first time because of construction and development. Warm water temperatures, more frequent storms again, and nitrogen and phosphorus, phosphorus leaching into the lakes and ponds in Maine. And we know about those, we've heard them in the news from time to time. There's only eighteen, eighteen hundred feet. From the back of these lots, the proposed lots flowing downward into Lovejoy Pond. Lovejoy is a extremely fond, we're really lucky to have it. It's a jewel and we wanted to hear that, right? And finally, I strongly encourage the town to require a lot of foreign constructions. Of any kind begins. This rule requires John Lawrence to meet the obligations set forth. In the plan, we'll offer a small measure of safety to the property owners. We have any questions? Thank you.
Part of your comments, do you, do you think they're well enough captured in the previous comments that were made? So for us to write responses, do you think?
I don't need a response. I just wanted to, you to know that there are landowners besides Mark and we have many of them up in the audience and. And also that have concerns.
Yeah.
And I think it's good to hear from a layperson. And not just the experts.
I agree. I just want to make sure that your concerns in that and her, that you responded to.
I'm not sure my concerns have been met at this point, but I certainly they've been heard for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd love to speak? And if not, we zoom. If you could raise your hand if you'd like to present a comment.
Okay, so, um. Yes, we will ask the applicant to. Provide a written response to the comments that were made tonight. Um, I don't expect that all of the comments are going to be resolved, um, you know, through that written document, but. It would be helpful for us to have the applicant's perspective, any suggestions or. Solutions that you see to any of the issues that were raised. We have that in hand, as Jack suggested, that will, um, you know, pare down the list a bit of those issues that planning board needs to, um, discuss in depth. And so anything we can provide in that regard would be, would be very helpful. Um, I'm not certain at this point, um. When we will put this back on the agenda for discussion, you'll need some time to put that together. Um, I know that it won't be the second meeting in September because we have a very full agenda. For that date. So Chip and I will be talking about pending projects and agenda, and we'll get back to your possibilities for for scheduling, um, the next. Board discussion about, um, Manitoba. So, um, planning board members, any additional comments?
I was just going to suggest or ask, um. During the response and those revision that that you do go ahead and update upon, uh, bigger and just for people for clarity. So there are not multiple versions of this thing floating out there, so we have to leave this in the next process from the applicant. You asked during your presentation. When would be the appropriate time to do that?
I think, you know, part of that comment, um, speaks to the process that's laid out in the land use sort of, it's this three step process, which is. You know, rather. Commerce on, I guess, is, you know, the word that comes to mind, but but it is, you know, it is a loose that. I think that most of what comes in that final phase of the final application process are. Um, it's high details, there are some spelled out in ordinance itself, things like remaining roads and so forth, if that's not done earlier. That's the time that you do that. But I think it does provide an opportunity to, you know, you can use that as kind of a catch up if there are outstanding issues that need to be incorporated that haven't been. We can ask what happened with that final, with that final plan. But I I do think that, um, as I think you're suggesting, Henry, that whatever we we know at this point that can be incorporated, it would be helpful. Everyone we have done as soon as possible, so that we can, you know, see what we can stand.
I have one other suggestion, um. To the applicant, to the extent, when you're preparing your response to Mr. Benke. To the extent that Mr. Benke, uh, and. In a couple places makes reference to the board, what the board, what he believes your ordinance requires. If the applicant agrees with that, I'm sure you'll tell us that. Obviously, we'll decide at the end what the ordinance requires, but it's good to make sure, in addition to the factual issues, that there is legal disputes. Uh, the meaning of the ordinance that. You may think.
Will do, thank you.
Um, planning board members, I mean, anything else, any further comments? Uh, I can suggest that we leave the hearing open, um, because I think there will be. You know, some more exchange of, of next meeting, sort of, about some of these implications, so. Well. We'll leave it open if everyone is available to.
When, when this, your, when this, maybe a little discussion about. When it could possibly be considered?
Well, I I think, um.
Just make all this concerning.
Yeah, uh, possibly. In in October, um. There are two regularly scheduled meetings in October and, um, we'll talk about that a little bit toward the end of this meeting. We can, we can talk about priorities, we know we want to line things up, but. Potentially a bit that much. So, um. Uh, one more call for the product, if there's anything. And if not, uh, I guess we finish with the conversation, thank you all very much, we appreciate your comments and your questions, and we will be back for more discussion. May, um. And planning board, there's a couple of additional issues to talk about, so we'll move on to those. Um, we have seven minutes from the thirteenth of August. And, uh, Jack has provided some suggested edits. Uh, I wasn't at that meeting, but Jack provided edits on the thirtieth of August. And. Actually, the thirtieth was when he held and distributed those edits, so if you can take a look at those. You have them all ready.
We have another copy. I I don't go back into my.
Well, I, I didn't want to change your question. The public hearing for, um, we calling roads. It currently reads that. Uh, Don Edith, the subject was placed in nineteen eighty four, showed a minimum capacity for the two thousand dwelling. I'd like to change that to show only asking for a piece of cross out the minimum and change it to only.
And at least the, uh, um. And Jack added some, you know. Anybody else?
See it?
Yeah. I'm going to have to. Anything else? Somebody? Not getting yourself in here.
It's okay.
You're signed? Anything else, okay, we have two suggested edits on with your motion. Motion and second discussion. All those in paper. And.
Let's see.
And I'm standing as well.
I will know, but it's pretty good. Thirty nine minutes.
So that would be one way that it's around and handling to do it. Um, I have a couple of things I wanted to mention, um, just quickly, um. We have a list of pending projects and issues that are going to need to come before the planning board at some point, including, of course, additional discussion. Um, about Manitoba, um, but, um, the next meeting, which is on the twenty sixth, twenty four. Um. Is the Fisk application on Torus City. Um, that one, as you recall, was, um, rather complicated, um. They're proposing, it's a similar proposal to the Weaver property on on Torus City, it's similar in some ways, but there were some additional complications. This is the one, um, where Jack and I felt it was appropriate to talk to the town attorney and get some answers to some questions. And I know Brandon, you were asking specifically to, uh, to hear back about the result of that. And I didn't get back to you because reflecting on that, I thought it would be, um, more appropriate to have that conversation with the full board.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think the result of that discussion will influence in some way the decision that the board made, so. That's the only reason I didn't get back to you specifically on that, I just wanted to. Um, so, you know, we did have a good conversation with her and I think what she provided was helpful, you know, we'll discuss that, you know, on at the next meeting, on the applications presented. Um. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, we had talked a little bit several meetings ago about a list of policy and land use ordinance revision issues. That we really should, um. Discuss further and make some decisions about priorities, what kind of a package we want to put together for the next town meeting next June. The deadlines come up quickly and we would need to get whatever changes and and. Additional materials that we want to present together. Um, usually, you know, our deadline is sometime in March, and so. Uh, we'll need to talk about that and figure out what we want to proceed with and what we don't. Um, I do have a list and I can send that to everyone in advance, I think it's as complete as it's going to be at this point. There may be some additional issues that some of you may have, some changes that you want to suggest adding, and we can do that. But I'll send you what I have at this point. And, um, um, then we can talk about what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, I'd like to, if it's not on there, to address some of the concerns and history of. Our solar ordinance and our, um. What we had, you know, added last year with the ancillary dwelling in the portal housing. You know, go over anything that we've heard, I've heard, and maybe bring those up to the office.
Yeah, um, the, uh, we've talked a bit about solar and the CID process, so that's definitely. And, um. I don't have that actual list with me, but there, there are a dozen things anywhere. And I think, um. Uh, we've run across a few small items that are tweaks.
Spreading, you know.
In the land use ordinance, that'll be fairly simple, but that's usually a package on itself, you know, just some corrections and clarifications, so there's that aspect. And then the other big one that, um, we've talked about putting on the list a number of times is short term rentals. But, you know, I I say, uh, Jack and I talked a little bit about this, and I think the first conversation that we probably need to have is. Um, do we in fact want to do something in the ordinance with respect to short term rentals? Or did the issue, what's the problem, I guess, that, you know? I think we can identify the problem before we start talking about the solution. And maybe we do need an ordinance, but I think we need to talk about the reasons why we do first. And make sure we're not putting the part before this.
I'm glad we didn't do it during the ADU, um, portal housing, I think that will lock that up. But I do think that there are liabilities and other issues that, you know, the board should be made aware of in other towns. The suggestions from MMI A, and we could do that.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, I'm I'm just suggesting, I think that's the first conversation we need to have, you know.
Do we have a rentals ordinance? Cover all rentals, so why why would we just single on one, about the other?
Yeah, and then, you know, it it to some extent, in in a theoretical sense, it does tie into some extent with the affordable housing legislation and that whole aspect.
There was some discussion on the main public radio this week and last week about this issue. And we got, they were planning to, from the town of Newark. Uh, they put it out there already, it was pretty much defeated, but one thing that interested me was. That you couldn't have an ADU that was such, um, short term rental because ADUs were supposed to be built to. Increase the housing stock to meet certain needs that wasn't to.
I think we already incorporated that into our ordinance.
Online image, I think you're right.
I think it's already in there.
I think in some community, I mean, I think in some communities, I can see why they would be. Be interested in.
You're gonna get nailed, the African community. What I didn't say. Eric.
It's not my fault, AI, you can't figure out what you're saying. Uh, I'm sick of you.
Well, for now.
Well, we're all. I just even do think that it's, um. I think that's a really good discussion to have, I mean, I. I think in some communities, I can see it may be an issue, um, and and I'm not sure if that's necessarily true in refilled.
Right, I mean, some, some of the, I mean.
Nor am I.
You know, some of the resort and coastal communities have issues that we certainly don't have in refilled, and they've tried to resolve some of those through a short term rental.
And and I'm not a proponent of creating, um. You know, ordinance for for that purpose, you know, I think if 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 we don't need it, we don't need it. You know, there's some ordinance issue, you don't have to see the.
So I'll include that on the list and we can have that conversation. Um, and the other thing about this is I think that we need to schedule a. Lot of time to talk about this, I don't want to try to fit in at the end of the meeting or anything like that. And I'd like to try to target, um, a date in October. Um, I, you know, we can talk about what else is pending, I've got, you know, I've got, um. This, which will be next time, we've got four near hatch and more in Manitoba deliberation, I don't know if you know of anything beyond that. Um.
Could right now, could be soon.
What I propose, we have like an off cycle workshop.
We could. You know, it's.
I mean, buyer could do. You know, whatever you're known, it's gonna be. No, I think you can do something where you. Gathered specifically talk about that then, and those issues and just spend an hour or two together.
You know, if if we can find a a date and time that everybody would be willing to put, you know. Put toward that. That's too late.
And any issues in what we're, I think, depending on what. We were tasked to deal with.
Yeah, that actually is another, um, on my list, um, there are a number of issues, there are lots of those, the comprehensive plan actually, and. I was thinking that the appropriate thing to do with comp would be to, there were timeframes associated with them. I was thinking I could pull out, um, the more immediate ones, those are the components. And add those to the list. Um.
I also recall, um, Catherine supplied.
Uh, that's on my list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and part of her list, um. Was. Most of her list actually was reviewing, and it wasn't just planning board stuff, it it had to do with other municipal ordinances. She wanted whoever the responsible board or commission or individual. To review ordinances if they hadn't been modified or reviewed on some period of years. So part of her list was about that, you know, taking a look at it to see if updates were. And and that's on, that's on my partial list as well.
So you're gonna send this list?
I will. I will send it to this.
Wait, that's, that's a select board list? That's, that's coming from select board that's?
Um, that piece that Henry just mentioned, uh, in fact, oh, it was months ago, um, but I had been asked to meet with, uh, with Catherine Woodson, the, the select board chair, and Eric, because she wanted to talk about her ordinance list and the status of updates. So some of those ordinances are within her view of the planning board and some are not. Some have to do with other, you know, boards, commissions or the county manager. And so that portion of our list is from, is from Catherine, from the select.
Okay.
Um, that's a, that's a minor portion of the core list of things that we should consider. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, I was able to watch part of the meeting that I missed in October. Um, I didn't have access to the beginning of the, because something happened. But, um, but the, um, the portion I did see, I noticed at, at a point, uh, when the meeting was concluding, there was some conversation about whether or not we needed a motion to adjourn the meeting. And, and there was a motion to adjourn, and I think that's fine. But I did want to tell you that, um, years ago, I researched this issue and Robert's rules don't require a motion. Because I wanted to make sure that that was appropriate. And according to Robert's rules, um, if you have concluded your agenda, or if you met your scheduled time for adjournment, no motion is necessary. So that's the reason I've always gone it that way. It's simply unnecessary. If you want a motion, you know, I'd be happy to go along with that, but it's unnecessary. And ordinance with Robert's rules.
Sometimes it oozes a lot of this.
Okay, so.
I, I, I might be able to do remotely. Can I do remotely or? Yeah, I'm in Seattle.
You want to visit and be here? Yeah, certainly. If I could be here and you can do it remotely, that's an option.
Chick, do you, do you do a roll call of who's gonna show up and who's not gonna show up?
I should keep a list.
Would I actually just do a better job?
I would like to, I would, I would like to watch this or just check it because, um, if we're not using the owl, I'm trying to make sure it was, if you're needing to inform remotely. I'm used to the owl, but you know.
Yeah, I know, we're trying to, we're trying to upgrade this.
But that, this, this may not be good enough for the wall on the road here.
Well, I mean, they did, well, not necessarily. We'll finally get rid of the.
Oh.
So, but I'll have the video from tonight. We're just getting too much, you know.
You know, you tied out.
Yeah, we can see your thing in the middle. It's not around. You can talk, I mean, pause over all the time and, yeah, that's getting me done, so. Okay, that's it. We're adjourned.